I just had two items before we get to the topic at hand. One, look forward to sitting down with our city manager candidates on Thursday. So that's, look forward to that most of the day. And then I look forward to Congressman Randy Fein's visit here to City Hall and then out to the wastewater treatment plant. So, hope you guys can join us.
Yes, I'll be there. Anything for you, Councilman Sullivan?
No, nothing.
Okay. Gombaro?
Yes.
George, sir.
All right. So, I spoke earlier, and where I left off was that I moved that this council, based on the investigation that came in last night, and that it's readily accessible for our citizens to review, I move that this council immediately issue a vote of no confidence and a vote of censure for the reasons that I outlined this morning. So, first motion. And the second motion is that I also move that this council immediately send a letter to Governor DeSantis requesting his removal from office for malfeasance. And I ask that this letter include signature blocks of those on this council that choose to vote in favor of this motion.
Discussion?
One, so we got two motions here, so let's handle the first motion first, I would say. Because, Mr. Gombaro, you made two motions there?
I did, yeah. So, I've made the first motion.
One is for no confidence and censure.
And censure.
And then the other is for the letter.
Letter to the governor.
So, we'll start with the no confidence and censure.
So, point of order, at a workshop, can a motion like this be voted on?
And theoretically, workshops are for workshops and not for motions, but there's no case law, and there's nothing in our policies and procedures that prevents you guys from making this. Normally, you guys bring motions at business meetings, but nothing in your policies and procedures say that you can't bring a motion. It's good practice to do it at business meetings and normally not at workshops.
Okay. May I make a suggestion? I think in order to have discussion, because you need a second for discussion, so...
Do I have a second for discussion?
Well, what I was going to suggest is that maybe we, in more of a general way, discuss the investigation findings, and as a group, maybe come to consensus as to what we're willing to do moving forward, because we could run into two issues right now. One, whether or not a motion is proper at a workshop, and two, if anybody is not ready to second based on not having the investigator before us yet, you may not get the robust discussion you're looking for.
I mean, I'm certainly willing to second this. I think, I think there's a portion of this that's, it's time-sensitive, right? We've been waiting for quite a while, and it's created an atmosphere of haze and, you know, gray area that I feel like the mayor has used to his advantage to try to undermine and paint a picture of something that has not occurred, because he's using it to, in his own self-interest, instead of the interests of the city. So, to me, waiting longer only adds to that. You know, I understand what you're saying, that important issues kind of should be agendaed and, you know, have time to formulate opinions, but at the same time, we've known this is coming, we received the findings yesterday. I would assume, and you could probably speak to this Vice Mayor, that a lawyer that's prepared a briefing isn't going to deviate much from the findings that he presented in his briefing. You know, so we probably know 99% of it, you know, that we're not going to get from asking extra questions. I do also understand that potentially having him present it publicly would, you know, alleviate some of the concerns about the public knowing everything and things like that. Do we have, is this, are the findings publicly available? City Manager?
Per a public records request, yes, anybody can request them. They're not publicly on our city website or any of that.
Did any of the media sites publish them?
They filed their live.
I know Pierre typically publishes documents.
Yes, there were several public records requests, and so we sent the information to our local media outlets regarding...
Yeah, I'm just not sure if he put it on his website, but did you see that?
I think he included a link in the story that he did, yeah.
Yeah, he did. Got you. So, all the information's out there. I, you know, to me, and obviously, this is going to be part of the discussion, is, you know, what's the harm being done? And, you know, that's, that to me is the interest of the entire exercise, is, you know, there's harm being done to our city every day. Did we ask for this? No. But it's our responsibility to follow through with what we think is the right thing to do. So, I would, I would like to discuss it and move forward.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, so we'll open it up for discussion officially at this time. Councilman Gombaro, it's your motion. Would you like to start?
Well, I can reread my words, but...
Just so I know, this motion is...
This motion is for vote of no confidence and censure.
And censure, okay. No confidence, censure, okay.
So, the highlights are, in short, the accusations that led to the investigation have been substantiated and are extremely concerning, especially, especially the substantiated finding of malfeasance. And I'm truly disappointed with the mayor's behavior, the wild accusations against this council, members of our city staff, which has been clearly documented, and members of our community without any facts supporting his claims. Some examples of these were the Flagler Buzz interview, where he gave all of us the middle finger, the State of the City address, which was an embarrassment, and other many situations. His insistence of continuing to bring up past resolved issues in a negative fashion versus looking towards the future in a collaborative manner with this council and our residents is not in anyone's definition of executive or strategic leadership. In my assessment, in a very short amount of time in office, the mayor has managed to divide this council, divide our community, and tarnish the image of this great city. So, for these reasons, and it's well documented in the investigation, is the reason I made this first motion, and I'm going to ask for consideration for the second motion.
So, I have a brief statement, and then, you know, some more discussion, probably. So, I was very disappointed by the findings into the mayor. The findings outline repeat violations of the city charter, not just once or twice, but multiple times. A pattern of inappropriate and profane behavior, and an overall disregard for the responsibilities of his office. As a veteran specifically, I was trained to lead by example. Believe the Marine Corps is kind of the best university in the world for leadership, and I was taught to conduct myself in a manner above reproach, which means that you try to stay above any level of scrutiny, because you know that that's possible. Respect isn't demanded in leadership. It's earned through integrity, accountability, and how you treat others. And so, I believe the mayor's actions fail that standard. Multiple times, he's been warned, it's been documented, that he was exceeding the city charter, pressuring staff to resign, interfering with staff operations, and creating a hostile work environment. And he was warned that this was both unprofessional and unlawful per the city charter. These are not misunderstandings of what the rules are and that I accidentally broke them. He knew the rules, did it anyways. He said he was going to do it before he was elected. He was elected. He attempted to do it on multiple occasions, was warned that it was a violation of the law, and did it anyways. The pattern of deny, admit, justify, blame others, that's not leadership, that's evasion. If any city employee was judged by these standards, they would have been terminated, plain and simple. That would not be tolerated in a normal workplace. No one is above the law, not even the mayor of Palm Coast. We deserve leadership, rooted in respect, character, and integrity, not ego or intimidation. So, part of my problem with the entire thing is that, you know, when these were brought, the first answer was, "Well, a previous city council violated the charters, so I can." The second answer was, "Well, I was frustrated," as if none of us are ever frustrated and no other people in this city are frustrated. Still, not a valid reason to break the charter. Third reasoning was, "Well, I intended to come to you after the fact and ask for your consent." And then finally, apparently in a moment of clarity, it was, "Well, I didn't even do it at all." Those were, those were the four things that happened in that moment on that evening. So, it wasn't deny, it was just justify, everything. And then finally, a moment of clarity, "Well, maybe I should say I didn't do it." And then we've spent the last month listening to conspiracy. It's because I motioned for certain things. Well, quite frankly, the Vice Mayor's motioned for those same things several times over the last couple of years, and nothing like this has happened. Perhaps because the Vice Mayor hasn't been walking around City Hall violating the charter, intimidating staff, using profanity, making judgments about people's appearance in an unprofessional manner. Maybe that's the reason why. Maybe sometimes things happen because you caused them to happen, and maybe sometimes you're responsible for your own actions and not blame other people. So, in my opinion, I wholly support this. I think that the no confidence and censure is the only real level of authority we have as a city council to, you know, exact any punishment for this violation. And I would advocate that allowing someone to do this only erodes any other councilperson's power, right? That basically says that your position should not exist. If, if we don't act in some way, then the result will be that any council member can just violate the charter at any time, right? And we can continue onwards without, you know, any punishment, right? There's no punishment for the misdeeds, then anybody can do it, right? And so, I think, I agree that we should confirm this vote of no confidence as well as the censure and move forward. I think it's vital to our city to get back to doing the work of the city, instead of participating in a sideshow that's been occurring for several months now. And we can see, you know, obviously, I'm assuming the mayor is okay and there's no problems, and the reason he's not here is because he doesn't want to be here and he chooses to not be here. But we've seen that the mayor has not been doing the business of the city since this started. And so, if he's not doing that, what is he doing? Why is he here?
Thank you, Councilman Miller. Before I go to you, Councilman Sullivan, I just, I did text the mayor to see if he was okay. I have not heard back. Have we heard anything from him?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Councilman Sullivan?
Yeah, as the new person here, I have read the report. It came to me last night, and I agree with the comments. I wasn't as involved as the rest of the council has been, but it's clear that, well, I look at it as, the difference between the mayor and us is he has that title, mayor. He's supposed to be the, kind of the front person for the city, to be, I mean, that's the one thing, he gets one vote, like all of us, and so on and so forth. But the little difference is, he gets elected citywide for the job, but he's not doing that job. He's actually having a negative impact on Palm Coast right now, not a positive impact. And he doesn't seem to understand what his role, proper role, should be. Now, the other stuff, I would, I would class it, rather than go into the details of my old military background and all that, I think what we have here is a coarse bully. And that's the way I describe him. He's acting as a bully, and usually, that's the sign of somebody who has an inferiority complex and wants, has to kind of strike out to show leadership or what he thinks should be leadership. So, I think there is a problem. I think he has demonstrated it over and over, and therefore, I have no problem in supporting this particular motion.
I just push back on the, you know, there's a misunderstanding. I think there's, I think everybody understands exactly what their role is. I think one person believes that those rules don't apply to them, because it's been communicated 100 times, right? And so, it's not a misunderstanding of responsibility, even though it is our responsibility to know what our roles are. So, that's not a very good excuse either to break the rules because you didn't know the rules.
Well, I'm just saying that...
I'm not saying that, that's what you meant, I'm just, I just want to clarify.
The way he acts would indicate that he doesn't understand what his role is.
Right, no, I got you. I just want to clarify that this is, this is willful. This is not an accident. This is done on purpose.
Thank you for those comments. I, since this all began, I have been very silent on the whole situation. I've wanted to wait for the findings of the investigation before I cast any aspersion or judgment, or really before I formulated any type of opinion from a factual standpoint. And I was hoping that the investigation would fare it out, kind of what you were alluding to, to an extent, Councilman Sullivan, was that maybe there's a lack of understanding in that some of the things that were said and done were because of a, you know, a coarse sense of humor, or, you know, just kind of rookie mistakes, things of that nature. And unfortunately, what the investigation shows is that that is not the case. Mayor Norris made repeated, took repeated actions that are in blatant contradiction to what our charter allows for. And I have a grave concern about that, because to the points made up here already, if we allow this behavior now from our mayor, then what will we allow in the future? And so, from that standpoint, I have some grave concerns. When the media reached out to me last night and asked me what my opinions were on the findings of the report, I, and it was, I don't know who reported it, it might have been Pierre, I said, "I am truly sad for this city." And that is a genuine, that was my very first gut instinct response. I am sad for this city, because this is not good for the city of Palm Coast. We've already seen its effect on the city manager search, what it's done. I guarantee you, people looking from the outside in, who are looking at possibly investing in our community, moving their business to our community, moving their families to our community, these are not things that a investor in the future of Palm Coast wants to see. They want to see stability, they want to see predictability. This type of behavior promotes neither of those things. So, you know, one of the things that Mayor Norris has continued to say is, "I'm going to do what's best for the city of Palm Coast." We've heard him say it numerous times. And maybe he genuinely thought at one point that the actions that he was taking were in the best interest of the city of Palm Coast. But I have to say that after being told by city attorney per the investigation findings, "Mayor, you can't do that. That's in violation of the charter. You need to take this to the board. You need to get consensus for these types of things." Now, we're getting out of the realm of maybe somebody trying to do what they felt was in the best interest of the city, and now just doing whatever they want in contravention to how our rules and procedures mandate you're supposed to do things. That's, that's a very, I think, objective analysis of what the report said. Now, getting into my opinion of why, how we need to move forward and why, I don't think that this is what the voters of Palm Coast genuinely voted for. The voters of Palm Coast did not vote for a dictator. The voters of Palm Coast did not vote for a mayor to come in and disregard the rules and the procedures set out in the city charter, and not want to work with the board as a governing body, because that's what we are. We are a governing body in a republic. We are not part of a dictatorship. If we are in a strong mayor system, and the mayor had the ability to take certain actions unilaterally, this would not be a conversation, but that's not the system that we're in. And somebody who doesn't mind that is a problem. If any one of us did the actions that the mayor took, I would expect the same response. And I think, you know, when we look at the way we govern from up here, everything has to be brought to this dais. If we have an issue, it gets brought to the dais, we get consensus from each other to move forward. If there's an issue that we see, then we bring it up at the dais and we say, "Do I have consensus to look further into this?" That is what a governing body does. It provides transparency, it lets the public know what we're looking into. It's how we should operate as a responsible governing body. His actions have been irresponsible. They have not been in comport with what we're supposed to be doing as that governing body. And I have a really big issue with that, because there have been plenty of times during city manager meetings when I've said, "Man, I really want to do this or that." And you know what the response always is? "Great, bring it up during comments and get consensus from the board." And you know what I do? I bring it up here and I get consensus from the board, because that's my job. I feel that what the mayor has done is the act of a coward. If you want to, rather than bring issues to this board and discuss them in a public forum with the rest of us, that is what a leader does, that's what a member of a governing body does. To call secret meetings where you're going to try to unilaterally get somebody to resign, which is just a euphemism for fire, and preface the conversation with, "This is a one-way conversation," I think that's the act of a coward. To me, that's equivalent to a keyboard tough guy sitting on their computer behind a Facebook profile, making comments on something, and not coming to city council, standing at the podium, and trying to resolve things with your council. So, I have a problem. I don't think that the actions that have been taken actually benefit the city. I was really taxing myself in the middle of the night last night, because this kept me up, thinking, "What has, what has the mayor done, because he's continued to say, 'I'm going to do what's in the best interest of the city,' what have his actions actually done for the city? Is he doing good work for the city?" Because at the end of the day, that's the question. Is he doing the job? Is he able to get things across the finish line for the city? And I don't think the answer is yes. I haven't seen what these actions have done to improve the city of Palm Coast and to benefit our voters and our residents, and I have a problem with that. From a human element, I'm sorry to the people who have endured some of this treatment. It's not fair. And I'm, I was pretty sickened to see some of the things that were said to certain members of our staff and to some of our residents. And so, for that, I apologize on behalf of this board. I do want to say that I have a problem with the future ability to perhaps be able to do the job. I know that the mayor has not had his standing meetings with city manager over the last month. That's a problem. The State of the City was rough. It's my understanding that, you know, we all kind of had a script, or, I won't say a script, but a program that we were supposed to abide by for the State of the City as far as formalities and things like that. And that wasn't followed. There was quite the introduction from the mayor, and then I had to follow that, and that was very hard. And city manager had to follow that, and I can't imagine that that was easy. And then today, we come here, and I hope that the mayor's okay. I hope that, from a safety perspective, there's nothing wrong with him, and that he did not show up today simply because this investigation came out and perhaps he didn't want to show up. But that affects people, because I didn't get a heads up. And so, I'm thrown into, "Well, you've got to run the meeting," and that's fine. That's, as Vice Mayor, that's what I signed up to do. But I say all this to say, there's, there's an inability, I feel, to effectively do the job if we don't get past this somehow. And so, I have a concern there. The last thing I'll say is, there's been repeated allegations and repeated statements on social media that this has been a witch hunt. And I have a really big problem with that, and I'm, I feel myself getting hot, because not only does that impugn the integrity of the people who have had to endure some of this treatment, some of the people, if you think it is easy to go to HR with an HR rapport as an employee, you are sadly mistaken. It is very hard. I have been a boss, and I have been an employee, and to go to HR for any HR issues is not an easy task. There are fears of retaliation, there are, you feel weak, okay? It's not something that's fun. I can guarantee you, I know it is not something that our staff members wanted to do. So, for them to bring forward these allegations and then be told that these are, quote, "trumped-up" HR charges is abysmal. That is not behavior of a leader. And so, for those who are on social media saying, "Oh, this is a witch hunt, because the mayor said during State of the City that these are trumped-up HR charges," which now, via this investigation report and these findings, we know is not true, is quite disturbing. And to Councilman Miller's point, you know, twice from this dais since I've been on this board, I've moved for a moratorium for different reasons. And trumped-up HR charges haven't been filed against me. I have probably cost developers in this community millions of dollars. Now, I've done it legally for my votes. I've made legal votes that have affected their bottom line. And they didn't write a report about me. Knock on wood. I have, there are certain members of this community, from a developer and builder standpoint, that have openly criticized me for not voting for density increases and zoning variances and things like that, because it doesn't allow them to increase residential density. And I'm not looking at an investigation of this nature. So, to say that this was done in retaliation for those things is completely unfounded. I agree that something needs to be done. My hesitancy with doing it now, prior to the investigator coming forth and presenting the findings, is he's also supposed to present recommendations of how we move forward. And I don't know what all those recommendations look like. I still would like the investigator to come here and present those to us. So, I understand the motion. Conceptually, I support some type of reprimand or, you know, but I don't know what that bevy of options looks like, and I don't know what the likelihood of sending a letter to the governor, for instance, like, I don't know what that end game looks like. I don't know if there would actually be real action the governor would take, and so, if it's going to be an act of futility, I don't know if it's worth it, just because it's just another thing that's not good for our city. So, I know that's not the motion that's pending, the governor letter, but with regards to the other actions. So, those are, those are just my thoughts. I know we have to, we have to call a vote, and obviously, I'll let everybody respond, but those are my thoughts on the investigation at this time.
Vice Mayor, just so, the reason I broke it up into two motions. One, action that we can take. The second motion is an action that this body, this council is requesting of the governor. He may or may not do it, but we're on record for saying, you know, we, we don't approve, and of all the things that are outlined in the investigation, and, you know, it is our recommendation that you do it. It's up to the governor. And so, the first motion, again, actions that we can take and a recommendation going forward.
And, sorry, were you done?
Go ahead.
Yeah. To the point, you know, the, the recommendations are in the findings as well. I think there's kind of like a laundry list of things that some are more viable or cause more action than others. I would also advocate that, I don't know to what extent we can change our policies and procedures, but it's recommended in there that we give ourselves some more bite to hold ourselves responsible, you know, because right now, it's rather vague that we can only censure and, and potentially refer to the Ethics Committee of the State and the governor. And so, I would also advocate that not now, because we can wait till that presentation actually occurs, and I can make a motion for it then, that we review and revise some of our policies to, to provide actionable consequences in, in cases where somebody is violating the charter in a, you know, a malicious way or a willful way that, that reaches the level of malfeasance. So, I'd like to do that as well. To your point before about State of the City, Vice Mayor, I wanted to thank you publicly for your leadership there. Someone needed to step up, and you did. And, you know, obviously, that's what we want our mayor to do, and he's unwilling to do that. And so, we needed that leadership dearly at that moment, and, and you gave us that leadership. So, I appreciate that. I know it's not easy, especially when it's unplanned and kind of on your toes. The other thing I'll say is that, you know, the damage that's being done to our city, we're going to have to build trust, and we can only do it one day at a time, right? You don't get everybody's trust back tomorrow. So, we need to do what's appropriate, so that going forward, we can build trust one day at a time, and hopefully, a year from now, we can look back and say that we've done the work to build back trust, that we're doing the work of the city for the residents of this city. of this city. And so, to that, the other thing that you mentioned, you know, it goes back to integrity, and how do you work with somebody that you perceive as not having integrity? So, there's just been a series of lies. It goes from small things to giant things. You know, the removal of personal possessions from the office and then saying it's due to filming that never occurred and was not occurring. You know, saying that I didn't say that while saying, "Yeah, I did, actually, but probably they didn't take it the right way." So, what was it? Was it, "Did you do it? Did you not do it?" You know, the whole thing is just a fabrication and a witch hunt. But the report says that it happened, and also, his own exhibit says that he did it. So, it's just confounding in terms of integrity. How do you work with somebody that seems to not be truthful in many different ways? You know, it makes it difficult going forward. I think that, you know, in my opinion, the only avenue of discipline from our perspective that's allowed is what's been motioned, and I think that that should go forward. I'd also advocate for the letter being sent to the state because, again, that's for review by the state, and they can review those findings and make that decision themselves, and that'll be up to them. So, all we can do is ask and let someone else decide because of the form of government we are, which, you know, it's a lesson in abiding by the rules so that we are abiding by rules because the state has dictated what we're allowed to do here in some ways. Our charter also limits us. But to the point, in the future, I'd also like consideration in making a motion to see what we can do, or maybe ask city attorney to review kind of what maybe other cities do in terms of discipline and policies so that we are not, we have less of kind of a gray area here in the future that we know, "Hey, this is the consequence to any action that violates the charter," and therefore, we can hold someone's feet to the fire if they tried to not abide by the charter. But in any case, thank you again for your leadership. I know that was difficult, and, you know, from my perspective, this is not, again, not anything anybody else wanted. I don't want to be working on this. I want to be working on the city and getting the city better every day. Instead, we're dealing with a constant distraction, trying to build trust while another person is trying to tear that apart. The accusations of corruption with no substance. Been asked multiple times here at this dais. If you're going to say somebody's corrupt, please provide me with some evidence. We would love to investigate something and find anything that's not being done correctly within the city. And we can never, there's never any producing of any actual evidence. But it's an easy way for someone that doesn't actually have anything to say to cover up that fact that you don't have anything to say. And so, I just have no confidence in being able to work forward. You know, I think the absence today and, you know, assuming the mayor is okay, says the same thing. Not willing to do the work of the city, not willing to confront things that he may not like. If it's in a back room where he can intimidate somebody and tell them what to do, certainly willing to do it, but not in public, we can't talk about it there, right? So, that's just my opinion on it. I think we should move forward. I'd urge everybody else to vote yea on this motion and the next.
Thank you, Councilman Miller.
Just, again, thank you, Vice Mayor, because you did a great job, both at the State of the City. I was there, and it was shocking. That's the first time I've experienced, actually in person, his leittribe essentially about the city. And that was kind of shocking, really. I was there as a citizen at that point, and I don't want to hear that, you know, all that kind of, that's not the point of the State of the City message. And what you've said today is all true. My position is coming into this after-the-fact kind of thing. I did read the report, and I have to agree. I mean, it's important for the three of you to explain to me how we've gotten to this point, and you've done a good job on doing that. My concern is this, is that I'm willing to support this motion right now, but I don't think it would be wise for us not to have a unanimous vote on that. Given the situation and where we're headed, I think it would not, I just don't think, if we're going to make a motion, I think it should be unanimous. And if we have to wait for the investigator or the lawyer to come in and fill us in on some additional thoughts on recommendations and answer questions we might have from that, that may be okay. But for today, I think that if, on this motion, I really don't think we should not have a unanimous vote on it if we're going to vote for it. So, I'm going to kind of fall in line with the other three of you think on this because I'm the guy coming aboard, you know, kind of after the fact. So, that's one. Number two, I think there's a three-step process here. I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think it's a two-step process. They have an Ethics Committee at the state that looks at things like this, and I think that's a second step. Say, after we did this first motion, I think the second step would be to go to the Ethics Committee, and they will have the resources to look at the precedent on this kind of action and what's been done. I have serious doubts personally that if we send a letter direct to the governor today, he will not approve it. He will not approve it. And that's okay. We make our point. But I do think, for the long run, if we're going to be effective with the mayor and based on what he's done, I would think it's a three-step process. And I also feel strongly that if we can't get a unanimous vote, given what you've said, then I have a little problem with that. So, I'm kind of going, deferring to the three of you on that right now. So, those are my thoughts right now. They may not be everything, you know, that you guys are thinking, but that's where I am right now.
No, I appreciate that. I think that that's probably a good perspective, coming in a little bit fresher. We've all kind of been in this. And, you know, from my perspective too, we've all been kind of enduring, I think, exercising a pretty good amount of restraint, knowing that there are lies that are being put forward and not really saying anything until the investigation came out. So, I actually commend Councilman Miller and Councilman Gombaro for knowing that there are misrepresentations and lies that have...
Weekly.
There's been a lot. And we've all just been kind of sitting here and as professionals, not saying anything and not getting on social media and, you know, defending what we know to be mistruths. So, and that's been tough because, you know, I think we all really care about the city. And so, you know, to know that, well, if there is really corruption going on, if there is really something, if there's, quote, "spider webs," then bring them to the dais and let us all help in finding a solution. Because at the end of the day, we are supposed to be solution-oriented, and that has not been what has happened. There's been no solution orientation that's been coming from Mayor Norris. Rather, it's been, "I'm going to say these very broad, you know, make these very broad statements in interviews like with Flagler Buzz, but then not bring them to the dais so that we can find a solution," and that I have a problem with. City manager, did we, do we need to give, and we'll get back to, we will vote on the motion in just a moment, but just for our knowledge, for the investigator to come to council, has he said when he can come to council and actually present the report?
Marcus has been coordinating that.
Yeah, so, if this council can give me a direction, I do have his availability. There's a couple of dates that he gave out to me that Tuesday is his best days, but he can make next Wednesday and Thursday available. And worst-case scenario, he can make the first business meeting in May, which is May 6 available.
I would advocate for the earliest possible.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I really wish the mayor were here, not because I know it wouldn't be easy for him to sit there and listen to all this. It would be hard for anybody, and I don't wish that upon anybody, regardless of what they do, because it's hard. But he's not here, and, you know, ideally, we'd make a motion like this and be able to have this conversation with him present, but, you know, we can't, none of us can control that. So, with that, Allison, will you please call the vote? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Public comment. I apologize. It's a motion, public comment. I know. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I didn't know it was an evening meeting. Because you realize it's like 4:30. Hi, Eddie Lang, Palm Coast. I knew this was going to come about because obviously, it hit the news last night. And, you know, as a community member, we elect you guys. I mean, I want to say I voted for most of you because some of you guys were all appointed, so I didn't get that opportunity. But we elect people, we vote for somebody, they may win, they may not win. But in the end, we all have to come together and support who's behind, who's leading us, and hope that they'll make the right decisions. We can come up here, use our public comment. I agree with you guys. I feel, my biggest concern now is, so you do this censure, all right? And, you know, and God willing that he's okay and nothing bad's happened, which, you know, knock on wood, it's not. But he's not here today, and, you know, he's probably not here for a reason, for whatever, if it is one of the reasons that we think because he doesn't want to just face this right now. What, the way his attitude has been throughout now, what's it going to be now when you censure him? I mean, is he just going to sit back and go, "Okay, I'll be better now," and is that going to be the end of it? Or is this going to be an ongoing thing because he's got, I mean, what is he, four years that we do this? This is going to be a long four years. And me, as a citizen here in Palm Coast, I feel like we just got, we need things to get moving. This is getting old. I'm getting tired. I mean, there's always going to be something, but this is just getting out of hand. I mean, I happen to be at the HBA Parade of Homes Gala when Mayor Norris was speaking at State of the City. And I tell you, word travels fast, and, I mean, he basically berated these people. I mean, look, I get it. People have problems with builders, but they're lifeblood here. They live here too. There's a lot of people that live and work here in this county and in the city. And to berate them like that is ridiculous. I am for the censure. I hope you go ahead, and you should get the supermajority because I don't think, you know, we should have one out. I think you should get the supermajority in that vote. The governor, I agree with Mr. Sullivan, congratulations, by the way. I agree, Mr. Sullivan. I feel like the governor probably won't do anything, maybe? But at this point in time, I mean, censure is the only way, but how do we move forward, though? And I really want to move this along quickly. Like, this has to get, whatever the process is with legal counsel, we just need the process to go and move along because we spent so much time on this. I mean, you guys should be home right now. This is something that for the last 40 minutes you've been talking about, you should have been, you know, adjourned. So, but I hope you guys make decisions. I support you, whether I agree with everything that you guys do or not. We have to support each other. The city has to grow. It's going to grow. That's no stopping that. But at this point in time, I'm even losing faith. You know, I didn't vote for Mayor Norris. I'll tell him he's watching. I did not vote for him. But you know what? I supported him. He won. But now, what am I, I can't support this. I can't support the way he's speaking to the city, speaking to staff, because honestly, the one thing I want to say when I wasn't here, Brittany Kershaw is amazing. She does an amazing job. I'm glad I did Citizens Academy, and if the community really wants to know how all this staff, I met most of this, Lynn, all these guys, these guys are amazing. And you know what? They're doing the best they can with what they got. They're not corrupt. They're not trying to do anything to hurt the city. They're not rich. Otherwise, they'd take their money and run. They're working here for us. So, I really appreciate, but thank you, Brittany. All you guys, you guys do an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Good afternoon. Mr. Miller, I appreciate you bringing up accountability. That's what we need in this city. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and talk about a man that's not here because that's not in my blood. I'm just not going to do that. It's funny, on the list of people in that report, because I read the same report as you did, this is all about Westward Expansion. The same names that are in the Westward Expansion are all in this report. That's odd to me. The appointed guy over here is, keeps dividing this. You three were, and you know, and y'all were making difficult decisions. I don't know what their agenda is by appointing these people, but I guess y'all want to remove the mayor, now appoint a new mayor, make Ms. Johnston the city manager. I just don't understand how all this is happening right in front of my eyes because it makes no sense. We didn't vote for him. We voted for you three. We didn't vote for him either. I'm a resident. I do thank the city for what they are doing. I was here earlier. As you see, I had to leave because I have Family Matters. I did want to make a comment to say thank you to the city workers that are putting in that new culvert pipe that I've been asking for for two years. That's why I was here earlier. But then I decided to come back because I knew this was going to happen. And it's wrong that y'all are doing this without him here to protect you, or even say anything. It doesn't matter if he's wrong or right in it. We can all judge, right? But we're not here to judge. I want the city to move forward. They want this city to move forward. Quit holding this city back. He keeps bringing up these accusations. Well, maybe, maybe if we all worked together, he probably wouldn't be so defensive. I'm very defensive. I would love for those people to resign that he asked resign. That would be great in my books. That would be a win in my books because they did do me wrong. Those people did approve 62 Paraty Lane, and there was zero accountability on that. My home did flood, and there's been zero accountability on that. But there has been admission because now we're getting a new culvert pipe that's 42 inches bigger. It just shows admission that the city was negligent, and he's been pointing it out. So, now, all of a sudden, we want to bash the guy. It doesn't make sense. But when I talk about Westward Expansion and those names that are all on that list, that makes some sense. Think about that.
Thank you for your comment. Any more public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any response to public comment?
Yeah, just to reply to Mr. Davis. So, one, I think we're kind of extrapolating some stuff out there that's probably, you know, you can draw whatever conclusions you want, but I don't think they're correct in that everything is about the Westward Expansion. Another thing that you pointed out was, we shouldn't be bashing a guy that's not here. His job is to be here, and he chose not to. That says all it needs to be said. He could be here rebutting this, talking about it. He's not. He chose to, right? If someone accused you of something and you had to show up at work, and you had to show up to work the next day, and you just decided to not go, it would say something about you, right? Then, the other thing is talking about, you know, there's some sort of, the insinuation is that there's a conspiracy, right, regarding the Westward Expansion. Again, these issues are about what the mayor did, what he actually did, which on multiple occasions was a violation of the charter. It's not about any policy. And again, we've cited examples of other people having very similar policy positions and none of this ever happening. So, just kind of continuing to say, "There's this conspiracy, but I have no actual proof." This is exactly what we're talking about. This, it's furthering this distrust and thought process that there's this vast conspiracy. There is no conspiracy. There's a bunch of people that were wronged by the mayor. He broke the charter on multiple occasions. That was found in these findings. A third-party lawyer that has nothing to do with this city interviewed all these people. That's the conclusions they came to, right? I didn't write it. Nobody up here wrote it. Nobody from city wrote it. That's the conclusion they came to. I don't think anybody that has any conversations with Mayor Norris could ever really come to the conclusion that he was not capable of using coarse, profane language. I've witnessed him do it several times. He did it during his campaign. It's not out of character, and I find it to be very credible. So, my point is, is that I think kind of standing in this, like, vague conspiracy only furthers those things when we're talking about, "Let's do something moving forward for the city where we can serve the residents better." You know, these things are not based on fact. What's based on fact are the findings of this report, which is the mayor violating the charter, the mayor acting unprofessionally, the mayor violating ethics codes, the mayor not showing up to work. Those are all things that are fact, right? To your point about your road, I'm very happy that we're getting to a point where we can assist you and make sure that, you know, you don't experience those same problems you had before. So, you know, if you ever experience anything else like that, feel free to come up and tell us. I'm listening. So, we've worked towards this. I've been here for five months, right? And so, we've worked towards this. And so we've worked towards this. The mayor's not the only person that's advocated for you. Okay?
No.
So.
I'm not saying just him, I, I, I'm saying the three that I have voted for right here.
No, I understand that. I think also
I know who advocates for me because I talk to y'all on a regular basis.
I think also that, the thing I also want to avoid with my colleagues here is that they were appointed, right? That's the process in the charter to fill seats and if the mayor were to be removed, just so you know, the process in the charter is a snap election, right? So,
Special election.
It's, we're not gonna be, nobody's gonna be appointing a mayor. The people will vote on a mayor again, um, if that were the case, if that were to move forward, so, uh, rest assured about that. But these people were appointed because that's the process that our government has created many years ago, not us, we didn't do it, to fill seats. So they've been appointed by the other members of this council. Um, I can tell you that I participated in no conspiracy to put specific people in, right? So, um, one was appointed before I was here, one was appointed while I was here. So, I, you know, I can't answer questions to that or some sort of, you know, plot or whatever, but I didn't participate in any plot and I think continuing to talk about stuff as if there is one is only damaging. It doesn't help us move forward and get things done. You know, we're doing stuff like this instead of doing the job to help you guys out, you know, help ourselves out as well. We're all residents as well, so.
Thank you. Any other response to public comment? No? Okay. Um, I will just say that, you know, it was during the comp plan process and this is directly, and, and Mr. Davis, it's not just you that mentioned the Westward expansion. I've seen it all over social media, um, for the past several weeks. Um, it was me several months ago that exposed the fact that over a hundred million dollars in state tax dollar appropriations is being spent on a road that per a development order, a private landowner and/or developer for out west was supposed to pay for. Um, after exposing that, I wasn't on the receiving end of what the mayor has called, quote, trumped up HR charges. So, for there to be a continued narrative that this report and these allegations were, quote, trumped up because he has spoken out about the Westward expansion is completely unfounded and I think it is very important that we all operate from a base of truth and fact when it comes to running this city. If anybody has been outspoken about the amount and the, the pace of residential development, it has been me and I have been on the receiving end of builders and developers right from that podium who have criticized me because of it. And you know what? When they request meetings with me to talk about other projects, I show up and I put all of that other stuff aside and I do my job because that's the job. The job is to do what's in the best interest of the city at all times. And as hard as it is for me to take some of the criticism that has been, in my opinion, of course, unfounded from that podium, from those people, I still have to work with them because I'm not gonna put my personal, um, feelings and my, my personal agenda ahead of what I feel is in the best interest of the city because that is the job, just like showing up here is the job. So, I think it's really important for those who are out there buying into this narrative to realize that it is just not true, plain and simple. So, uh, with that and with there being seemingly no further comment, Allison, please call roll call vote.
Of course. Councilmember Gombaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Pontiary?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Vice Mayor, um, if I may, I'd, I'd like to make, uh, just a couple of points here. Um, you know, as I, as I think back on our long day today, today's like a textbook example of how we should be conducting business, working together, debating issues, compromising, that's, that's the only way we're gonna get anything done, right? We did it on the utility rate increase. Hard, hard decision to make and so, um, thanks for your leadership in leading us through that. Um, Councilman Sullivan, I hear you on maybe a middle ground and I think it is important that we have a unanimous vote. Um, Councilman Miller, I also hear you on it'd be good to get the investigating attorney to come in and, uh, lay out, uh, the, the recommendations, but also the recommendations on going forward, on how we might be able to better structure the charter because we're getting ready to go through a charter review on, on, on that. And so, um, and, and I think after that point, if, after engaging with the attorney and moving forward, you know, we, uh, we think, we, we send a letter directly to the governor, um, then we do it at that point and then we also agree to move forward on, you know, things to look at as we do the charter review. But I think, I think the evidence is there, the, the, the findings are, are there, uh, to send a formal complaint to the Ethics Commission, um, to, um, to, for them to look into the malfeasance of Mayor Mike Norris. And so to, in an effort to stand united as we take this position, I mean, we've all expressed our frustrations and disappointment and, you know, sadness in regards to, to, to all the actions that have been captured in the investigation, um, I'm happy to move to a middle step, have the attorney come here, lay out, um, you know, the recommendations because really going to the governor is kind of the nuclear option, right? And so, uh, and then not only that, let's get past this, but how do, what do we do, you know, going forward? So, um, so my updated motion, and thank you Commissioner Sullivan, um, you know, I think it's important that we have a, a united front is that, uh, this council, uh, file a former ethics complaint against the mayor for malfeasance, uh, and it's sent to the Ethics Commission for review, uh, while we await the formal, um, presentation from the investigator and to look at future options, but also to decide whether or not we finalize the, the letter to the mayor, to, to the governor. So that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, so, I think this is a good middle ground. I think that, uh, one, it's clear in the findings that the investigator says that these findings rise to the level of malfeasance, which is defined in the charter and the non-interference clause. Um, so violating that non-interference clause is malfeasance according to the, the charter and, and should be referred to state statute defining that in ethics, which is how you get to this point and referring to the Ethics Commission under malfeasance. So, I think everything there is appropriate, right? These are the things that have been found, these are the things that have been done and we're just asking for the Ethics Committee to review them and provide, you know, something back.
I just want to say, you know that, uh, the Ethics Committee can, can, can bring fines, financial
Yeah, there's all sorts of things that they have at their ability that we don't
That's another thing that can happen because they go in this route. Um, and, um, that may hit home too.
Yeah, I mean, what, to me, you're referring it to an outside body. They have, uh, you know, they have their rules and standards that they abide by and they do this for a living, right? So, um, essentially it's taking it out of our hands, which I'm in favor of because obviously we're, we're probably a little bit too close to it, right? Um, and so, uh, I'd prefer for any of these actions to, to come from some, some other governing body because they're the ones reviewing it because then it, then it removes that action from us and it's a third party that's looking at it objectively.
I'm not saying that we won't eventually send a letter, but if you have the backing, if the Ethics Committee, you know, agrees with our position,
Yeah, no, I got that.
Then when it goes to the governor, it's a lot stronger because his staff essentially has already
Yeah, my, my understanding is that they'll, I think their findings are generally, if there's something that rises to that level, they would probably directly inform the governor as well.
They might, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying
It would just be a letter would probably also bolster that. Um, but so, once we get to that point, we can work on that, but I, I agree. I think it's an appropriate response at this point, um, because of the things that I outlined because it, non-interference is clearly defined as malfeasance. Malfeasance is a violation of ethics statutes in the state of Florida. The Ethics Committee is those who review that and then determine appropriate action after that. So, I think all of this is appropriate, um, based on the information that we have.
Any further comment?
I'm in.
Public comment? Seeing no public comment. Um, Allison, roll call vote please.
Um, Councilmember Gombaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Pontiary?
Yes.
Uh, you, the motion passes unanimously.